Okay, I call the August 2nd meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals to order. My name's Ken Foreman, I'm the Vice Chair, and I guess due to the exigencies of summer traffic, our Chair is stuck in Orleans at the moment, is that correct?
He should be here any minute, he said.
Okay, so in the meantime, I think we'll, if we could have a vote to take the open meeting portion out of order.
I'll make a motion to take it out of order.
Start on that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that first item on open meeting is the minutes of January, of July 19.
Only three of you can vote, who's three?
Okay, all in standing, so have you had an opportunity to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, and any corrections or additions?
No.
All right, if we could have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, I understand. Then it looks like we have a discussion of special permits and process with building department and conditions, which sounds like something Suri that you're gonna talk about?
Yeah, I don't know if we should wait to get the full board.
I think we should wait.
At least the Chairman, because I'd like to go review some issues that I'm running into.
Okay, board updates?
Board updates.
We're waiting for Kim on procedural rules and policies?
Yeah, I suggested that I go ahead and do them, because we're, we've been on this for a few months, and also the board might want to take into consideration removing the administrative approvals until the person who takes my place, you're confident with them, being familiar with the zoning bylaws to address administrative approvals, so I want you to think about that.
Okay, how many of those do you do a month?
About as many as you do.
So that would double.
We're running at about probably forty-five percent, maybe forty percent of all the applications to the board, maybe forty percent are administrative.
So something to think about, that would double the workload, basically.
Oh, please.
Come on, you think we can handle it? Okay, future agenda items?
I will tell you, please don't forget, August 28th has board updates, it is the joint meeting with the bylaws review with Attorneys Mitchell and Ritchie, who were contracted to review our bylaws, it's very important that you attend, please.
Yes.
And get through that, I will not be able to attend, so I trust you guys.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, it's a Tuesday night, and I know it's with the planning board, I believe the selectmen are going to be there, hopefully, so that they can understand in case any of this goes in front of the November town meeting.
PB.
I'll check on that, so I'll do an agenda for this board before I go on vacation.
Okay, so something I thought might be worth the board's consideration is send, crafting a letter to the town manager, I guess, regarding Suri's duties and the importance of getting someone with her capabilities as November rolls around.
I'd support that.
Yeah, and I think we should, since TJ isn't here, let's make it his responsibility.
I think one of the important things that you need to mention is the timeliness under Mass General laws of the decision, once you take action.
Avoiding constructive grants.
If not, it's a constructive grant.
Right, so drafting.
I don't know if they realize that the...
I think they, I hope they do.
All the decisions are done in-house through me.
How do they think they happen?
I don't know. I have no idea, they just look at you.
Okay, so as we wait for TJ to arrive, I guess I could also introduce the rest of the board to you all, for anyone else.
Excuse me, could you take a vote to go, Mr. Hurry's here, take a vote to enter back into your hearings, please?
All right, you wanna do that?
Yes, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I will happily turn over the gavel to TJ, I haven't introduced anyone yet, and, or said anything about the mission, we did do the minutes and most of the stuff, except for item two on open meeting, which Suri wanted to wait for you on.
Okay. Which we can do after the hearings.
Sure. Yeah, so we're back in normal session.
All right, when do we have to do introductions and all that?
You could do quick introductions.
Okay.
I introduce myself, but I didn't introduce anyone else.
All right, everyone, my apologies, traffic was a little too much to contend with this afternoon, and my apologies to the board, too, start with the hearings, we'll introduce the board, to my right is Ken Foreman, he's the Vice Chairman of the Board, to my left is Ed Van Kuren, he is a full-voting member of the Board, Paul Murphy, who is also a full-voting member, and Bob Dugan, who is also Associate Member of the Board, excuse me, Suri Boudreaux, who's the zoning administrator, and we have a new recording secretary today, and I don't know your name, my apologies, Joan Robbins.
Joanne Robbins.
Joanne Robbins, I'm sorry, welcome aboard, all right, and my name is TJ Hurry, I am the Chairman of the Board, and this is on, it is, okay, we'll get into our continuation, we also have three new hearings, we'll start with continuation ninety-seven, Little Pond Village, the forty-B project at Helms Circle.
For the record, they have submitted responses to my email, and just today, we've got the Conservation Commission's letter, which I believe, and decision, which I believe you've appealed to DEP, so the board has not had time, not all the board has had time to read that since we just received it, so you may go ahead, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, for the applicant?
Hi, my name is Randy Lilly, I'm the developer, and just wanna say a few words and then kinda turn it over to the engineer, our engineer, Brandon and Peter Freeman, our attorney, again, I wanna, you know, thank the board for their time and effort in listening to what we have to say in our project, we started this process in early October, and, you know, we tried very hard to be responsive to all the technical issues that the board and other town officials have asked, we believe we have a well-designed project for the site, and kinda characterize this site as a hinge parcel, which is between a traditional single-family subdivision and a commercial site to the north, the abutting site to the north is Zone B2, which allows, with a special permit, six units per acre, our site has five point six units an acre, and we have seven affordable homes, our concept, as we've talked about it in the past, is a pedestrian-friendly Cape Cod village with architecture that includes traditional capes, salt boxes, and three-brand style homes, we went through a very extensive planning process at the outset of this to determine the number of units that we believed works from both a design and economics perspective, I know a lot of developers play games and ask for a lot more units than they need, or they hope to get approved, we could have done that, and we could have proposed a four-story, sixty-unit condominium building, but we decided not to play that game, we thought that it made more sense to do something that was compatible with the surrounding homes, and came up with a plan with modest-sized single-family homes, we also believe our plan is consistent with Falmouth's comprehensive plan, which encourages density by guiding development into convenient and pleasant villages, I now wanna turn it over to Brandon, our engineer, to talk about some technical issues, thank you.
Brandon Carr with Dupree Engineering, I was just gonna run through some of the things that have come, changed since the last hearing, so for the plan itself, there haven't been any changes to the layout, road design, anything like that, we have been, we have wrapped up the Conservation Commission hearings, as is noted, we have received approval and order of conditions, we are currently appealing that with DEP to clear up some inconsistent language and some vague conditions, we met with them on-site yesterday, and with the Conservation Agent, started working through that process, one of the concerns that the board brought up last time was the tree removal on-site, since then, we've received a letter from the town tree warden, we had our, we walked the site with an arborist and submitted a letter from him, basically, we're open to keeping that arborist on through construction, he had a couple of recommendations, some pruning to the trees that are remaining, some fertilizing, which we'll be implementing as the project goes forward, we submitted a response to the last few engineering comments, I think some of them tie in with the four items that Suri mentioned that we submitted responses to this week, which I'll get into in a minute, we submitted a, just to kinda summarize everything that we've been over for the past few meetings, we submitted a revised list of waivers, we highlighted things that have changed, either through the layout changes we made going through the Conservation Commission, which we presented at the last ZBA hearing, so some of the units slid around on lots a little bit, so we had to revise some of the setbacks, the lot coverages, things like that, we added some language about easement widths and the road standards, the road standards, as we've noted before, were, construction-wise, we're following the town of Falmouth standards, it's actually two feet wider than would be required for a town road, we did ask for some geometric waivers, which we've reviewed before, but if anybody has any questions, I can go through those, there's a few waivers we're asking related to the Falmouth Wetland regulations, which we covered in detail through the Conservation Commission, but we summarized them here, and again, they're highlighted because they're additional that came up through the Conservation hearings, wasn't gonna run through every one in detail, but if you have any questions, I can cover those, and then lastly, we were forwarded four kinda questions, I think the board had, related to the design, and we responded with answers to each of them, the first was garages, there was a question if the affordable units were to have garages, and we did agree to give, allocate the rights of garages to two of the affordable units, there was a question about driveway material being pervious, so we stated that we'd be willing to make the standard driveway for the units pervious material, there was a question on, this came out of one of the engineering, the town engineering review, about the width of the, these two drainage easements that, of pipes that go, I think it's between lots seventeen and, sixteen and seventeen, and then twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-four and twenty-five on the southern side of the road, they're ten and eight feet in width, they were kind of remnants of when the road was proposed to be public, just a reminder from last time, we've agreed that the road will be private, so the road, storm waters, everything on-site will be maintained by the Homeowners Association, not the town, so those easements are for maintenance for the Homeowners Association on the private lots, and that's, so there'd be no town access to those, needed to those easements for maintenance, since the Homeowners Association's responsible for maintenance, I think it's covered in the covenants that we've submitted, and just to point out that the pipes are small pipes, they're eight-inch pipes, they're about two feet down, so they're, if you were to access them, you'd be accessing them by hand or with a small mini excavator, you wouldn't need, so we feel there's adequate access, the last item was a play area for children, we do not propose a play area, we've noted before that the Gus Canty Community Center in Fuller Field, it's about a fifteen-hundred-foot walk from the site, and Falmouth's height beach is within a half a mile, so we feel the surrounding area provides adequate activity space, and the homes do have private backyards for activity, so those are the kinda, the changes since the last hearing, changes, you know, that have come up through the Concom or, you know, responses to some of the concerns the board had here, if you have any questions on any of those items?
I just wanna clarify for the record, Chairman Hurry, the, our tree warden is an arborist.
Okay.
And he did submit a letter, and when I received the letter from the applicant, from their arborist, I sent it to Jeremiah, our tree warden, and he agreed with him, so apparently there's no issues from one arborist to another on the letters.
Okay, good to know, anything else?
Nope, that's all I have unless the board has any questions.
Okay, we'll turn it to board questions, Bob, do you wanna?
Yeah, you mentioned all the driveways that you do are pervious material, but then it says in here you wanna reserve the rights of owners to pave driveways after initial construction or in the future with standard asphalt, so what is that?
It would just be that it wouldn't be deed restricted to maintain pervious materials for, you know, in perpetuity, since the drainage system is sized, we're not proposing any changes to the drainage system for those pervious driveways, it would still be sized to handle the runoff if they were impervious, so we're proposing that, you know, the standard driveway installed would be pervious, but there'd be no restrictions on the deed or anything moving forward for the owners.
So you'd allow pervious, but then you're basically negating it, saying... So you'd allow pervious, but then you're basically negating it, saying that they can put asphalt.
We'd like to reserve those rights for the owners, yes.
On the, on the arborist letter, I just had a question, just for clarification. So he mentions in here that all the trees that will be remaining along the property lines should be protected by a fencing about five feet off of the trunk. So what, what area on the plan is he referring to is? Are you referring to the, the property lines on the Alma side, or on the northern side?
Just slipped the letter quick. I think he's talking mostly about the Alma side.
Okay, so my, so my question there would be, looking at the plan that you proposed, it seemed that most of the trees on that line for a tree line are on the abutting properties. So if the fence is put there to protect those trees on the abutted properties, and now you're setting them in five feet, you're then setting them in closer on the setbacks in your backyards?
Yeah, and we, this came up during the Conservation hearings, and we did, one of the orders of condition that we agreed to with the Conservation Commission was to walk the limit of work prior to any tree clearing, to identify if there's any, you know, larger trees that fall in proximity to the limit of work, to try to kind of work around those and maybe bring the limit of work in slightly.
So is this fence line that he's referencing, is this a fence that will be remaining after, or is this only fencing during the construction?
I believe he's referenced. During construction.
I did have a question on the, on the bulkheads. I know last time you said they were figured in in the lot coverage calculations.
Correct.
Have those, have the bulkheads and the steps be figured in on the setback measurements?
Uh, yes.
They just, it didn't appear to be that on some of the plans. They're definitely on the steps, at least in the front yards? The steps versus the porches?
The porches, the front steps, I don't believe would fall in the building setback, because I don't believe they're part of the building footprint. Typically, it's the foundation walls or any covered porches. It wouldn't be, you know, front stairs, wouldn't be.
Because at Falmouth, I think we do count the steps. So you may want to check to see if that has to be adjusted for the setbacks?
Especially at a main egress, we take some into consideration.
Only because on one of those lots, it was only a ten-foot setback, so if you had the steps in, you're going to be. And on the, I know you, you've decided not to consider any kind of an open space or a play area, but the, I know that the rec center is within the fifteen-hundred feet, somebody can go there. There is going to be reconstruction at the rec center for the senior center. So another playground there is going to be removed. I don't know when they'll eventually have something there.
Okay.
And other than that, there's not much places in the area to go, so I don't know if you'd reconsider that at all at some point.
I don't think the applicant would be proposing a play area.
I mean, you did, you did mention that they have backyards, but on the, on the representations that were proposed, if somebody finishes patio space and stuff in the backyards, how big would actually the yard space be back there once all that finish work is done?
You know, they could swap patios for play areas if they did have children. I mean, it's, the backyards are flexible if, you know, you could go with a smaller patio if you had a swing set or something like that, I imagine.
I guess the only other comment that I have, it's, it's just been a little concerning from the start, is regarding these lot sizes. You've got five of the lots in the site that, that are under thirty-nine hundred square feet. You've got fifteen lots under forty-seven hundred square feet, another two close to five thousand square feet. So most of the abutting properties in the area average around nine thousand square feet. When you start moving back from there, you're averaging ten to eleven thousand square feet. So it just doesn't seem representational for, I know the architect spoke about Maravista, but that's really kind of a different neighborhood situation, and some of those are on two and three lots, they're not on single lots. And if you are dealing with lots of this diminutive size, then I would, I would not be in favor of garages or sunrooms, or maybe even sheds, just because the lots are so small and tight on the site.
You know, we feel we've designed a development that, you know, meets the town engineering stormwater regulations for pervious coverage. The state DEP Wetlands Protection Act, we've gotten approval under that.
I'm looking at it more as usability. I mean, you've got situations where, where these garages are only giving you two-foot setbacks to sidelines. Two feet, you've got lots two, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, they only have two feet. You've got three and eighteen, those are three feet and four feet. They're just really, really tight, and, you know, the more you put in the site, the less usability you have in the actual lot. So that's just a comment I have, but that's all the questions I have right now.
Paul, any questions?
No, thank you. My concerns are the, things like the two-foot setback. To me, that's ridiculous, that close. And I think it's just way overdone, and I think also, maybe the easiest thing is also to help the situation, get rid of all the garages. That's what I'm coming from.
Anything else? Ken, any questions?
So I guess my question pertains to the, the waiver you request for the two-foot setbacks. Is the sole reason you need that because of the garages?
I believe the garages are the only structure within two feet of the property line. It would be higher without garages, yes.
And I note that you have garages and you have sheds. Is there, why do you need both?
We've, you know, designed it to give the option of the garages. The, the garages are all, I think we're proposing ten. We've agreed to allocate two to affordable units. Those would be an optional, so maybe not all the houses would have both. You know, we've talked about before, this is kind of a maximum build-out, so it's, it's almost something to choose from. So, you know, some homeowners may go with just a.
So it would, it would seem to me that if you have a garage, you don't need a shed, or if you have a shed, maybe you don't need a garage.
And I guess that would be preferential to the homeowner. I mean, people use their garages and sheds for different.
Which, which two units are you proposing as affordable with garages?
We haven't, we haven't selected. I think early in the, the hearings, we submitted exhibits showing, you know, potential affordable units. It would be, you know, we could either allocate ones that are shown with sheds, but I, I think that's, selection of the affordable units in the end is up to Massachusetts, mass housing, so.
That's all I was going to say, that we did submit, or propose, you know, an input can be shared with mass housing, but ultimately, it's up to them.
And I guess I would second the argument that was made by Bob Dugan that they're going to be getting rid of the playground at the, at the Gus Canty. It's fifteen-hundred feet, but it's fifteen-hundred feet through heavily trafficked areas. I don't think it's really appropriate for small children to go from this site up there to, to get recreation, certainly not on their own. And I think you ought to have at least a eight thousand feet or so of open area where people could gather, where there might be some swing sets or something that would allow for some recreational activity.
Yeah, I don't, you know, applicant's not proposing that, so.
Anything else, Ken?
Nope.
Attorney Freeman?
The questions back and forth are helpful, and we appreciate that. So I don't really have anything new information to add, but I would just like to state that really, by way of we-think summation, because we do think that, again, with all the peer review and the deliberations, not deliberations, but the considerations thoughtfully that you have asked us to consider and that we've responded, so we, we do think that we're at the point of wrapping up. And so, my, I'll be brief, I know you like brevity, and I don't want to be redundant. But just as a quick reminder, sometimes in these processes, and not just your board, but all the boards I go before, you know, we sometimes lose sight of the fact that there is affordable housing at stake here. And not to personalize it, but I have two daughters in their thirties, they're public school teachers. You know, they can't afford to buy houses on the Cape. One actually moved to Vermont, and thank God, it's much more affordable up there. The other daughter, you know, we help with, we help her with housing, she couldn't survive otherwise. So I won't belabor that, but you know, even the news stories, it's gotten more acute. The issue and the problem and the crisis has gotten more acute, and we really think that seven affordable units will help this town a lot. On the other points, which are the substantive points, we know that questions have been asked by the board about density, and of course, the neighbors. But density, again, isn't in a vacuum. You have to see other detrimental effects, and some of the considerations that you raised in terms of some setbacks and garages and sheds, you know, we understand that. But in terms of the number of units, we do think that you can't just take density and somehow say that it's too much. There may be lots that are smaller than Maravista, but Maravista is just the other side of the pond. I also submitted back in January, when we had a hearing then, my letter that had comparable, very small lot, bylaws in other towns like Nantucket, and, you know, other towns off, you know, off the Cape, but other towns where density is welcome in the right place. And so I'll stress being in the right place, and that is many factors. The new smart growth, of course, the location near, regardless of whether there's a playground, but lots of amenities, and more importantly, retail and shopping, you can even walk to the harbor. So it's smart growth in that sense. It also is the epitome of smart growth because it is sewed, and that's a huge aspect here. It is sewed, and that is a real factor. And even the Cape Cod Commission is promoting more deck, more density in the right locations, one of the key factors of which is availability of municipal water and municipal sewer. So those are all, you know, strong points. Mr. Lilly mentioned in his opening, your town's comprehensive plan, and not just that, but there are other updates and studies, I forget the name of one more recent one, but although they're not adopted yet, but there's talk of indeed changing zoning so that there would be, in the right places, again, in the right places, a higher density that would be allowed as a right or with special permit. So with all of the, you know, peer review addressing everything that were understandable and legitimate questions about impacts, we think sincerely that we've passed with flying colors. And your town, professional staffs, technical staffs have, you know, approved things. We've made the changes, as Brandon said in his opening remarks, the most recent letter. We've really made everything that has been suggested a part of our plans. And I guess I'll just close with, you know, with two things. One is just to be clear, yes, we did appeal the Conservation Commission order of conditions, but that was because of some inconsistencies and vague language and, you know, the way some conditions were drafted. So we do think that needs to be worked out, or it appears that that, you know, has a very good chance of happening. But we could build the project that we have before you with the plans that were approved by the Conservation Commission. Those are the plans that we have before you that we're asking you to approve. And that means that we have complied with the standards which are not flimsy, the state stormwater regulations, the state wetlands protection act. We comply with those, we have met that burden of complying. And we have the proof in the pudding, your own Conservation Commission has approved those plans. So, you know, I would just remind you of that, and close by saying, as Mr. Lilly said, it's been designed to be a really attractive neighborhood. It certainly, nobody's ever, that I've heard in these hearings, said that they're unattractive. And so we really believe that it's the epitome of smart growth. It's a project that will help the town quite a bit with seven affordable units. And it's a positive development that I think you could very responsibly approve, and of course, we think you should approve, but I would think that you would be able to take pride in the fact that you're promoting affordable housing with a good decision on this project. So I'll close with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Attorney Freeman. And I have a question that's probably best addressed to you. With regards to forty B, there is an equitable aspect to those regulations. And with allocating the rights of two out of the ten garages to the affordable units, I believe there's four proposed, can you touch on that? And also, you know, regarding the equitable aspect, there's lot sizes, they, they vary greatly. And a lot of the, the market rate lots are much larger than the affordable, the ones that are proposed to be affordable. So if you could touch upon that, please.
Sure, well, having dealt with mass housing and the other agencies a lot that really set the policies on the affordable, I would say that, you know, this is a project that has twenty-five percent affordable, so two out of ten is twenty percent. You know, you can't, it's a, with an odd number, it's hard to make it exact. But so we basically meet the spirit. If for some reason the agency had a problem with that in terms of not being equitable, that's not a bad word that you chose to use, if the agency is somehow interviewing the decision, if we have a permit that allows us to build up to eight market garages and have the two for the affordable, I think it would be okay, but they may say, you know, we don't think that's fair. And if that's the case, you know, we'd have to adjust based on what the subsidizing agency says. So I don't see a big risk to the board by approving that. As to the lot sizes, you know, I would say the same thing, as we said, they're going to ultimately have the say in terms of which lots are affordable. What they typically do is they're not going to insist that, you know, the largest lots go to the affordable. They may want some sampling and try to, you know, have them roughly allocated in the same proportion. What they do typically, and again, there's no regulation, and there's no even written policy that I know of, but what they have done in practice is they understand it's pure economics, you know, wanting to reserve the most attractive lots and houses, sometimes including size, for the market units. So what they typically do is say, you know, variations of twenty to thirty percent, maybe, maybe twenty percent in terms of size, it's okay if the market houses, I'm sorry, if the affordable houses or lots are, are smaller. So, you know, we do think that, you know, it can be done equitably. And that's one of the reasons that the agencies reserve the right to actually approve where the affordable houses go.
And testimony had regarding any sort of proposed play area, it was cited that it would be a liability and ongoing maintenance issue for the homeowners association. We've seen forty Bs in the recent past that have proposed play areas for children. Can you tell us why this project would be any different from other forty Bs that?
You know, there's not, you know, there's no ironclad answer. It's somewhat, I certainly readily acknowledge, it's somewhat subjective in owner's preference and this developer's preference. I would say, you know, developments that I've been the attorney for, and we've received forty B or even other permits, you know, one difference is, and it may seem counterintuitive, but, you know, on a larger rental project where there's day-to-day management, usually somebody on-site, you know, there's more opportunity to control what goes on on the site when there's a management company. On a, you know, subdivision, when it's for sale houses, yes, there's a homeowners association, but as you probably know, there's not really going to be, you know, any day-to-day management. There really isn't the need of it. So, you know, that's one factor, which again, I'm not saying that that's, you know, an iron, ironclad support for what we're saying. But, you know, I, I would go back also to, to what Brandon said. And there has been some discussion, so again, the discussion I understand, and it's reasonable. But regardless of the exact size and whether there's a deck in the back, but, you know, there are backyards. And so that's different than indeed some of the apartment projects that I just referred to, where indeed, or even a multifamily condominium, where indeed there are playground areas, as you correctly stated. But those, in those types of developments, be it rental or townhouse or condominium for sale, you know, there are no backyards. So, you know, that's just one of the, one of the things that a developer takes into account. And, you know, I, I don't know exactly what's going to happen with, with Gus Canty, but I would think, you know, on the one hand, if they're real young and may use that type of a playground area, you know, typically in my experience, they're, you know, supervised by parents, so they could still go wherever, you know, the playground is, be it Gus Canty or elsewhere. As they get older, you know, it's not just a sandbox and a play swing, it's other things that, you know, there are ball fields still at Gus Canty, I'm pretty sure of that. You know, ball fields and other recreational things that aren't necessarily a totlot playground type of thing for smaller kids. So, you know, again, I think that if it weren't close at all, we couldn't say that. But I still think there's going to be some recreational opportunity for, for children.
Good. Any other follow-up questions from the board?
I do have just two questions, just on references on the Conservation decision. It mentioned in there that you had designated a construction entrance and a residential entrance, and it also mentioned that you had submitted a phasing and scheduling of the project. I haven't seen any of that, do, can you explain that at all?
Sure, I'll defer to Brandon again. Yeah, so as part of the Conservation Commission, we submitted a construction sequencing schedule. The sequencing basically was, the first phase would be the road and the stormwater systems. And then we talked about basically, not an exact order of lots to be developed, but that they would be, the Conservation Commission had concerns with whole site being cleared at once, and then it taking, you know, two to three years to build out twenty-eight homes. And we talked about doing, you know, the idea would be to do pods of four to five units at a time, clear that area, establish those houses, and then move on to the next, you know. It's going to be gauged on market conditions and just construction sequencing and scheduling. The entrance issue, items, we talked about the Worcester Court entrance being the construction entrance and the residential entrance being onto Alma Road during construction to keep that traffic separate. And also to keep the trucks off of. that traffic separate, and also to keep the trucks off of Alma Road and the neighborhood there.
So could, could you just forward us that, the phasing and scheduling, just we have something?
It's in, I'm not sure if you have, but it's, it's in one of the response to comment letters for, I think it's from maybe March or April that we submitted to the Conservation Commission, so I'm not sure if you copied it as part of that.
The scheduling, we didn't schedule it by lots. In other words, it's scheduled...
If you're going to speak, if you could please come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry. We didn't, we didn't schedule it by lots, saying we're going to do these four lots first and these four lots second. It's not scheduled that way.
No, but just, I mean, just to submit something that says, you know, roadway first, so many houses second, or not designated exact lots, but to give us more of an idea what the phasing and scheduling is and just in general.
And if you do construct like four houses at a time, one of those will be affordable, correct?
Yes. Yes. We'll pull out that limb, Brandon should have it, so you have it as part of your record.
Thank you.
And also since, in terms of being part of the record, as Sari mentioned, you do have now a copy of the Conservation Commission order of conditions, which I think does describe, you know, those two aspects.
It got late, submitted late today, so not all of you have been able to see it.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I just, I guess I would just ask why if, if, you know, if we eliminate the garages, we get rid of the equitability issue, we get rid of some of the side yard setback issues, why isn't that a, a simple solution to creating, you know, we, I mean, I think with a two-foot setback on the side yard, you are constantly in danger of encroachment. I think it's going to lead to problems. And similarly, I think with the issue of having at least a little open space within this development for people to gather and, you know, the side yard, the backyards you're talking about are about 20 by 40, they're really not adequate for any significant recreational activity. I, I, I'm talking, it's not the density that's the issue, it's providing adequate amenities for the people that are going to live there. And I think with, with these very tight side yards, we're asking for trouble, and I don't know what you do in the winter with snow. These are, these are questions that I have.
And again, that's the, the back and forth and the, you know, the, the analysis and discussion that I respect and, and I appreciate on that point, and that's what Mr. Lilly was, you know, talking to me about for a second. So we absolutely do believe that the 28 units is justified. We do hear what you're saying in terms of some of the particulars about the available space and the 10, the 10 garages. So if we did get a decision that allows the 28 houses, Mr. Lilly would agree to eliminate all garage, to the 28 houses, I think I said. If we get the 28 lots, the 28 houses, Mr. Lilly would agree to eliminate the garages. And then in terms of directing you to what Brandon had referred to, yes, it is a March 12th, I'm sorry, it's two, this is the one where there was some dates that were confusing. Is it February 12th or March 12th? Yeah, it's a, it's a February 12th, 2018, letter from DePree Engineering that on the fifth page does describe the construction sequencing and schedule, so that's in your record. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Sari, anything?
What are you getting ready to do? I think you need to discuss the covenant that was submitted. Especially in light of what the applicant is amenable to with the garages, because one of the covenants is that they didn't take a garage, they could add on to the house to take up that lot coverage. It's similar to that, I just, I'm paraphrasing. I'm paraphrasing, it's not exactly that, but, and then there's an, there's a couple of the covenants.
We had, I forget exactly which hearing, but we had submitted the covenants some time ago, maybe, maybe it was a week ago, but just so you know, it, you know, it was part of the package, not just the last day or two. And again, it's something that had been reviewed with the Conservation Commission, number one, and that's when we actually drafted them. And number two, although you may not have it printed in color, but really HOA covenant 11, we added 11A...
11A and B is the one I'm questioning.
Right, 11A, B, C, and D. Were in response to the engineering department's comments, and, you know, if those needs to be tweaked in terms of what we're discussing, you know, perhaps they could be tweaked.
Those are the two that I asked the board to review.
In regard to number 11, I think the zoning board of appeals should be added into at least A and B regarding the increase in structures if no garages or sunrooms are constructed.
And by the way, I have not forwarded that to Attorney Duffy yet because I wanted the board to discuss it first, so he does review everything, Peter, before.
Does anyone else have any other opinions regarding the covenants?
Again, the covenants can be reviewed as a final document and built into the condition that all final documents be submitted prior to and reviewed by town council for appropriateness and form.
Yeah, and we'd certainly be okay with that. That is a typical condition that, you know, sometimes they're not even reviewed at this stage. We're obviously happy to have done that, but certainly we'd be satisfied with a condition to that effect.
Thank you, Attorney Freeman.
Well, the thing is, I think we're running up against the deadline, right? So, I mean, I think we should be asking Sari to draft something for us and giving her some guidance.
I think that would be appropriate. Does everyone else think about that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've got to move this along, I agree. We've, the applicant has agreed that they would eliminate the garages, that's certainly an improvement. I still feel there needs to be some space in here for amenities, which probably would trigger an appeal, but...
That is a possibility.
That's my feeling.
Anyone else?
I think there should be a place for the amenities also.
There, there needs to be something because the lots are so tight.
I'm opposed to the, I mean, I'm opposed to the amenities. I mean, I, you know, I have two beautiful kids, and I, I notice playgrounds that are proposed for a certain location become isolation. People don't fix the swings, nobody wants to cut the lawn. You know, that's just my feeling. I, I totally respect what the board thinks, but to have this area set aside with a swing set or a grass area, I mean, I, I don't see that stuff utilized that often. But I know I'm the odd man out, and I'm not anti-child, but my, I, I believe that that's best placed in someone's backyard, so that some people don't have to look at a swing set in a jungle gym that gets rusty and overgrown. I'm opposed to it, but I know the board isn't, so that's fine.
Well, I, I would agree with that if, if, that's, that's my issue. I think it would be good placed in someone's backyard. The problem is, there's no space in the backyard.
Right. I mean...
You know, by the time you add the sheds, the sunroom, a patio, there's no space. I mean, you're talking 10 feet.
I agree, but then that potential buyer doesn't buy the house.
But there's also no playgrounds.
And it might not be a great place for children.
Well, look, you can have a grassy park area that people just go and sit on a park bench and talk to each other.
I'm just, I'm just saying this idea...
You know, the idea was for this to be a village, and if you want to have a village, it doesn't hurt to have a little spot for people to gather, have a barbecue.
I, I mean, if I could speak for a second, first of all, Worcester Court, it's a huge grassy area right at the end of the road. I mean, that's one of the great things about this site is that there are so many places to walk to that are so close. In addition to that, we've got these drainage areas that are just going to be grass. So, I mean...
Yeah, I, I mean, and again, you know, I, I really, Attorney Bobrowski on another, was educating us, and we all know, it takes nothing to make this thing uneconomic, nothing. So, I mean, what are we doing? He already said that he would forego the garages. In my opinion, that's an unbelievable concession, because I bet at the Housing Appeals Committee, he'd be successful. I'm just, I'm just speaking frankly and honestly. I, I, I'm just, I'm parting with the board on this, on some of these things. You know, that's where we are with this stuff. There's a presumption that we need affordable housing. We can condition this to death, it'll go to the Housing Appeals Committee, and there's 100% shot that everything is going to be pulled right out of it. I mean, what, what, what didn't we learn from these other 40Bs? And I, and, and listen, I understand that the board may not agree with me. Sometimes we don't agree, but I, I, I think it's time to move this along, you know, and things about impervious driveways, they've had this stormwater designed. Are you kidding me? I mean, I, I just completely disagree with these conditions, they're ludicrous. So I'm not pro, I'm not, yeah, so I just, I just feel totally differently than the board does on this. It's not 120 units.
I, I respect your opinion, but we should never base our vote upon fear of...
Oh, no question.
...an appeal, and I, and I understand that, but like you pointed out, the, it's a major concession for the applicant to withdraw the garages, that frees up a lot of lot coverage. Well, at the same time, I do, I admire the, the applicant's idea for offering so many variations, so it's not completely cookie cutter with the sheds, the, the options of the shed, the garage, the, the sun space. That's what makes this application different. Usually it is just a cookie cutter presentation before us for other 40Bs.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, absolutely. But, yeah, I, I, I mean, let's condition this and move it along, but I'm opposed to some of these things that I think make no sense. So I'm just one out of a few board members, so that's all I can do. But, you know, I respect the, the opinion of all you guys, and it's just, I just wanted to let you know how I feel about it.
Thank you, Paul.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay. So I think we're moving toward making a decision here. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, is the public hearing, is the public hearing still open?
We've had substantial, the chairman can ask if there's anything new. We're running, you know...
Public, public comment?
But if you do, excuse me.
Just a moment, Mr. Patterson.
Excuse me. If you do ask for public comment, please uphold the procedures to two minutes.
Right, and I'll, I'll address that.
So that we do have other hearings. And something new.
Right. So any public comment that I do recognize, we ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and ask any questions or make any comments through the board. We'll get your question or comment addressed by the applicant after that. We do have to hold it to two minutes per comment, and from there, I guess we'll start. Does anyone?
Something new.
And something new regarding anything that was proposed tonight. Mr. Patterson, we'll acknowledge you first.
Sam Patterson, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, but I'm here just as an individual. Just quickly, I've been to a number of workshops trying to figure out how to meet the affordable housing challenge, and the whole concept of community, cottage courtyards keeps coming up, and they talk about the social environment they create. And I don't think you should rec, should overlook the fact that these units are all facing each other and that people are going to have the sense that people are watching them and the behavior will be naturally contained. On the playground issue, I want to point out that the senior center playground will be built again. It's budgeted, and it's just a matter of time, and the phasing of their project is such that it may very well be completed about the, certainly by the time that the entire development is, is complete. The other thing I want to mention is that the nearby 40B development, so-called Little Pond Place, includes an additional property where in fact there is a playground that's cited. That's a block away. And then there's an additional area that's not going to be part of the housing footprint at all, and we asked for the, the proposers to actually give us a concept for putting small ball fields in there, and they did. And I can tell you that the Recreation Department, the Recreation Committee is actually eager to apply to the Community Preservation Committee for funding to actually put additional recreational facilities, which is right in that same area. So there are plans at a community level that should address some of your concerns about the available playground space.
Except that that one property belongs to the Falmouth Housing Corp., so it's a liability issue for these kids to go play on those toys. If there's a town park, that's certainly fine. So we've got to keep that in mind, too.
That's private property, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So these people in this development wouldn't necessarily have, I mean, it's great that there's a playground there, and that just goes to the point that developments like this need to provide that amenity. But these people in this development will not necessarily have rights to use it.
Only the town parks they can access.
Well, not all of that conservation parcel will be actually leased to the Falmouth Housing Corp.
I realize that.
There will be, there will be an area that the Recreation Department can build...
I hope so.
Yeah, that's, that was part of, we actually asked them to come up with a concept, not requiring them to put it in as part of their budget, but allowing us a space where we can do that on behalf of the residents in that area.
But is there currently a plan to do it?
There is not, there's no funding to do it.
Okay.
There's a conceptual plan.
There is a conceptual plan, a long spring fires group.
And that, and that project has, by the way, recently been given some additional subsidized funding by the Department of Housing and Community Development, signed off by the government just within the last two weeks. So that project will be moving forward. I think they even are thinking about putting a shovel in the ground in the, in the sprint.
What about this, I mean, I think that's a great idea to have some public space there. Would you have a guess as to when that might be funded or made possible in reality?
No, too many steps.
He's, he's not going to say anything about that.
It's not my purview. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Catch, and I live at 64 Alma Road. I just wanted to dovetail back to the last meeting, and there was a woman, I, I forget exactly what her title was, but she talked, she talked about... exactly what her title was, but she talked, she talked about wind throw. The fact that trees, once other trees around them are eliminated, become susceptible to being uprooting. And I noticed that Mr. Jeremiah also brought that up in his report back to the town. In fact, he said the trees that were left over were going to be very susceptible to wind throw. Now, I think both the applicant's arborist and Jeremiah looked at this project in a vacuum. They did not consider the trees all along the border with Alma Road. There are many trees there that are far more than 12 inches in diameter, and there's a saying amongst people that, you know, a tree with a di, with a diameter of six inches or less, the horizontal growth rate of the root will be 38 inches to one inch. And as that tree becomes more, more mature, it goes down to 12 inches to one inch. My point is, there's 11 trees at 54 Alma, 58 Alma, and 64 Alma that have the potential, because of the wipeout of the trees in front of them, that could fall. And not only if they fall, they're either going to hit one of the residents on Alma's house, or it's going to hit one of the new houses that they're building. This is a big issue, and that, and I don't blame the two people, both the applicant's arborist or the tree warden. I think they were asked to look at this in a vacuum, and the report indicates that. But you can't ignore the fact that there are all these other trees along the border. It's easily solved. That's the good news. Currently, you know, there's a 10-foot buffer that's along the Alma roadside. Make it 20 feet and make it a do not disturb.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch. You have two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
In all due respect, we did not ask the arborists to look at it in a vacuum. We showed them the plans, we asked them about the trees, the questions that were put to the board by Virginia Valleyela at the last meeting. We didn't ask them to look specifically at one side or other of this parcel.
Thank you for that clarification, Suri. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Edward Jallowick, 54 Alma Road. Board, thank you for all the work you've done since last November on this project. Your dedication to the town is most admirable and appreciated by the residents. The, just a couple of quick points, continuing with Mr. Hatch's comment. I read the developer's arborist report, and, and one line really struck with me. It said, "He did not observe any trees greater than 14-inch diameter." Just today, I looked at one tree 20 feet in from Worcester Court in the proposed roadway for this new development. It is 23 inches in diameter, a 75-inch, huge tree. If he didn't see that, then he can't see the trees for the forest. I, I don't know what site he looked at it, but it wasn't this one. There are a number of trees much greater than that, and it's a very mature forest. Point made tonight, said Falmouth Heights Beach is a half mile away. No, it's three quarters of a mile unless someone's moved it. Mentioned by the developer's attorney that the Concom approved this project. Sounds wonderful. They had to rule under state regulations because it's a 40B. Under Town of Falmouth Conservation Regulations, 13 of these houses could not be built because they are in the buffer zone of the coastal banks. Almost half could not be built under Falmouth regs. Concom's hands are tied, and I just wanted to point that out. Mention was also made that while it's a great place for development, the sewer's there. The sewer system in the Town of Falmouth is maxed out with projects on the board or already built. Capacity exists at the treatment plant, but not at the leaching field. So, the town will be looking at a multimillion dollar planning and development to expand the sewer system. Development's fine if you've got the infrastructure. Quite frankly, the sewer system is not there anymore. The site was designed and planned for seven units, and I still believe under the flow-neutral bylaw, the board has the authority to limit the development in that site to the seven because that's all the sewer capacity that was designed for it. Not treatment, but leach fields. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and that was exactly a two minutes. Thank you for that. Anyone else like to comment?
Just a very brief response to a couple of those comments on the sewer capacity and the bylaw. You have a letter from your town attorney, Frank Duffy, letter or memo from a few months ago, that said, "His interpretation is very clear that no waiver of variance is needed." We also have all your reports ongoing from Amy Lowell in response to all of these questions and all town departments, that the sewer capacity is there and there are no issues. The last thing I'd just like to say is, the speaker just mentioned the letter from Ellis Allen, our arborist, and he said that he said, that the letter said, "He didn't see any 14-inch larger trees." That's not correct. What he said is, "I noted that the majority of the trees are native black and white oak, with the largest diameter being approximately 14 inches in diameter." He said, "The majority." He also said, "There may be a few larger trees, but we did not see them." So, to represent that he somehow was blind and, you know, didn't see things, he acknowledged what he saw, the majority, and he stated, "There may be others." So, I just want to put to rest the idea that somehow that letter was misleading.
Thank you, Attorney Freeman.
Okay.
All right. I think we've heard from the public. All right. Turning to the board, what would be the board's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, that was made by Paul and second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I guess I would make a motion to approve the project, but with conditions. Oh, we're not going to do that. We're going to make a motion to direct Suri to prepare a draft. I'm sorry.
And I can return it by August 16th, which is under the deadline.
Okay.
And I believe we can give her some guidance.
Guidance on appropriate conditions.
So, okay.
So, we've already heard that the applicant's willing to accede to the removal of the garages, so I certainly like to include that as part of this draft. I'm sure the board will not entirely disagree with me, but I still feel there ought to be some, a, a small amount of open space within this develop--
I agree.
And I'm not sure what the appropriate number is, 5,000, 6,000, 8,000 square feet, but if it's going to be a village, there ought to be a place for people to gather in the village. There ought to be enough, you know, someplace where some kids could run around. None of these proposed spaces that are, you know, nearby are truly nearby at this time.
I'm, I'm opposed to that. I, I believe in street hockey.
I'm sure street hockey will occur.
Actually, the Worcester Court, where the kids play ball, is right around the corner. But in all due respect, it looks like you're heading towards making a condition on something, on a play area, and you've closed the hearing, so they don't have the opportunity to submit anything showing it.
Well, we've discussed it with--
Pardon me?
It's been discussed.
Okay. All right. Just making a point.
Has it not? I mean, they, they don't agree.
Okay.
And I don't know that I have the full support. I have Ed's support, it looks like.
Yeah, my support.
I think there should be some of that open space.
All right, that's going in the conditions.
Four of us feel that way.
Well, I, I think there needs to be more discussion--
Yeah.
--because where are you going to come up with that land? You just agreed with the applicant that if they get the 28 units, then they'll eliminate the garage.
I'm not saying they can't have 28 units. I'm saying they need to create some space within the development.
But you also closed the hearing, which they don't, then they can't allow. So, it's up to the board now, isn't it? Because we've closed the hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's no place to put that, in my opinion. I mean, this, this has been engineered to death. It's, you know, so now it's up to us to find a place for it. I mean, I mean, obviously, I'm not going near it because I'm opposed to it, but, you know, I just don't--
Well, the applicant didn't express any willingness to do it, you know, to--
So, what are you saying? You're making a finding that you asked for it and they didn't show a willingness to do it? But are you also thinking about a condition? That's what I'm trying to get at here.
In my opinion, yes. I mean, maybe I'm crazy.
But then it's going to be up to you to review the plans and see where you think they can put it while not giving up a lot, because you've closed the hearing, so they can't submit any proposals to you.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is going to affect a grading plan, possibly. This is going to affect placement of houses. I mean, you know, we're going to have to hear from the engineer again as to why it can or can't go somewhere, and, you know, it's, it's, it has massive consequences.
I mean, as you said, there is no--
Excuse me, the hearing's closed. Sorry. Sorry.
I mean, just my thoughts on that. I mean, and we've got to move this along, but it wasn't even contemplated.
It's been brought up numerous times--
I know the board wanted it, and that's fine.
It's been brought up numerous times during the hearing process.
Oh, no, I know.
Okay.
As Mr., I believe it was Mr. Lilly pointed out--
The attorney chair.
--when you look at the northeastern corner, northern side of the roadway, there is that, which I'm assuming is going to be grass area, where there's proposed dry well roof runoff. That is off the main street, although it's very close to Worcester Court, but it's still elongated. I could try and scale it and see how much that is.
Yeah, I'm not, I didn't give a number for the--
Or down in the front where they come in and out.
I didn't give a number for the square footage.
I'm sorry?
I did not give a number for the square footage.
No, you did say, you know, even 5,000 square feet is what you said, so that's where I was going with that. Those are the only two places where, without getting onto somebody's private property on these lots.
Well, there's no landscaping plan on that site, in those spaces anyway, so that you teach--
He made a statement that those kids could play in that area because they, it will be grassed, and he made that statement tonight. So, I'm asking you if those areas, or--
I think there should be something.
What I'm telling you is it's up to you to dictate where it's at since the hearing's closed.
Well, this preliminary plan, right?
Sure.
So, why do we need to dictate the exact location at this time?
I guess you don't have to. You can make a condition that they create it someplace.
Correct.
I'm just asking you to look at the plan--
Yeah.
--and see where those locations are. The only place that they can.
I'm not presuming to, to be able to make that determination. I'm only, I'm only feeling that there is a need--
Okay.
--within the, within the subdivision.
And those are two potential locations.
And I'm just, I'm just pointing out that those are dangerous areas where the two can go, although the one on the northeastern side can be created. It may not be 5,000 square feet, but further away from the street than the drainage area down off Alma. So, that's all I was asking you to look at, because it's limited.
Yeah, I, I don't want to say where on this plan.
Okay.
I just feel that there should be, I think that, you know--
All right, so you continue with your findings and what you want me to-- that was a condition as well on a final plan show.
My opinion, and it looks like I have support from Ed, TJ, and Robert.
All right, so--
And otherwise, I mean--
What do you guys want me to write?
Otherwise, I think most of the, well, I guess we, we want to state something about the covenants.
Well, the covenants will be, in the 40B, I usually condition that the final documents be submitted prior to the first occupancy--
But you had specific--
--and I can send it to Frank Duffy for review.
Concerns about two of the conditions, right. Two of the--
Yes, and I think they heard that, and they'll be submitting--
Eleven A and B.
And if anyone else has guidance for Suri, this is the time to--
So, do you, you don't want to put any limits on the play area, just to condition that--
They designate.
--they find that area.
Well, I think, I, I might put a limit of, say, a minimum of 5,000 square feet. How about that? Would, would you guys be happy with that?
No, I'm opposed to it.
Well, of course.
That's why I asked you to look at those areas.
Yeah, I'm opposed to it wholesale.
I think four to 5,000. All right, we'll go with that.
Excuse me, the hearing's still going on.
If it's, if it's a minimum, it, it's got to be a number. It can't be four to five. It's either four, or it's five.
Let's go with four.
Forty-five hundred.
Go with four.
Let's go with four.
Four.
It's fine with me.
Okay, and then the rest of them would be standard conditions, seven homes in perpetuity, monitoring reg, all the documents to be submitted, and it'll be according to the preliminary plan with final plans. The elimination of the garages.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'll draft that. Are there any other? I mean, I'll do all the findings according to 760 CMR 56 and all the other ones that you see. Anything else?
What about that provision for pervious driveways? Where are we with that? I'm opposed to that.
Did the, I'm trying to remember what the--
Their response was that they've created the stormwater runoff to, based on the pervious, impervious driveways.
Right.
Excuse me, and I don't remember the board saying--
I, I would, I guess I would say, since we've gotten rid of the garages, we've reduced the impervious surface quite a bit, so--
The roof runoff.
Right.
I'd say you'd allow the--
I'd be fine with that.
Yeah.
Anything else for Suri?
This will come back to you on August 16th for discussion under the open meeting--
Okay.
--since the hearing's closed. I will get drafts to all of you and Attorney Freeman.
Thank you, Suri.
And hopefully, I'll get them in time that you can send comments and Attorney Freeman can comment on it.
All right. So, that motion was made by Ken directing Suri to draft and--
Was there a motion made?
Yes, yes, I made the motion, but I haven't--
I don't, I don't think there was--
I don't know if I've gotten a second.
I don't think there was a second. What's Ken bringing up? Okay.
So, the motion was to direct the zoning administrator to draft an affirmative decision to return to the board at the next open meeting. Correct?
So, that motion was made by Ken.
Yes, that is the motion. With those two, with that bit of guidance that--
With the discussion, yes.
And that was seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? None? Okay. Unanimous? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have, I believe it's allocation 46-18, Room 70 Ostrom Road in Lakewood.
You can read it into the record. There is a letter. Go ahead and read it into the record.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11, Chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that not LL and Barbara Groom of Albuquerque, New Mexico, applied to the zoning board of the field for a variance pursuant to Sections 240, 203, and Code of Falmouth to allow for a dwelling to be constructed within a 50-foot setback from the area of critical environmental concern, chapter 240-88, on subject property known as 70 Ostrom Road, Lakewood.
Okay, Mr. Van Kuren, if you could just bypass the referrals, because there is a letter asking for continuation in there?
Yeah, asking for a continuation till the September 20th meeting.
Okay. And Attorney Cloud, are you here to confirm that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I would make a motion that we grant a continuation to September 30, 6:30 here in Town Hall.
Motion is made by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Can we take a?
Yes, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, and we're back, we will continue on, new hearing, 47-18, Casperin, 9 Highwood Lane in Hatchville.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Keith H. and Ruth Ann Casperson, trustees of Hatchville, Massachusetts, apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit to construct, a special permit to Section 240 38 G1B of the Code of Falmouth, to construct a garage bay addition to the existing three-car garage on subject property known as 9 Highwood Lane, Hatchville, Massachusetts. Standing comments from the.
Engineering.
Engineering. No other comments. One letter of support, one letter of approval from the Architectural Review Committee of Valleymead.
Okay, all right, and for the applicant?
Joel Cubic with Homes McGrath, we prepared the plan and the application, also with me here tonight is Mr. Casperson, the homeowner. So this is a single-family house at the corner of Karen Ridge Road and Highwood Lane up in Valleymead, there's an existing single-family house, Title 5 Septic System in the front yard on Highwood Lane here, there's a three-car garage that exists now, but the bay is facing towards the south, to the side yard of the property. The applicant is requesting through the special permit process here for a fourth garage bay. He does own a couple classic cars, and he would just move to this house from a different house and would like to be able to store those on this site. So if you've seen the architecturals, there's a second story above the existing three-bay garage, the addition of this fourth bay is going to be just a one-story and a little sloped roof coming back into that, so there's no additional storage or anything above that. We're not increasing any bedrooms, no additional flow to the septic system, it's no more non-conforming, it meets all the required setbacks, it's, it also meets lot coverage, it's a 12% as proposed, which, still plenty of space, there's a letter of support from the neighbor across the street that would be looking down this crushed stone driveway, we did also reach out to the neighbor to the south there, but didn't hear a response from them, and you also have the correspondence from the Architectural Review Committee, which would have to approve this and has, based on the plans that they've received so far, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, see if there's any questions from the board.
Is the space heated?
I believe, no, it's not, no.
Okay, and it's, it looks from the plans like it's on a four-inch slab? Okay. That's it for me.
Okay, Ed, any questions?
Oh, we don't have any questions.
Paul?
No, thank you.
Bob, any questions?
No questions.
All right, any, anyone in the public have any thoughts, questions, concerns regarding the project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Move to close the hearing.
All right, moved to close by Ken, second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It would be the pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the garage addition as proposed.
I will second that.
Okay. Moving on to findings and findings.
Leads the standards of XYZ.
240 216.
Yeah.
240 216.
And 240 23G.
All right, and I think it's important to note that they.
No more detrimental than what's there, that's for sure.
Right.
It's not in a 240-3.
You won't be able to see it from the street.
They have approval from the Architectural Committee from the Valleymead neighborhood, and I think the immediate of utter support should be noted.
Not creating an additional bulk.
Correct.
And the space is not heated, that's the finding.
Not heated, maybe it's worth noting that he's a car collector, hence the need for the four bays.
Yeah.
And conditions, per plans, anything else besides that?
No habitable space to be created within the garage.
That's a good one.
Thank you.
That's why we need you.
That's right. It's on the record, Suri. All right, so that was, that motion was made by Ken, I think?
Yep.
Paul, and then Ken seconded it.
I'm sorry, it was made by Paul, seconded by Ken, I had that in reverse order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Joel, you can tell Mike McGrath that you almost beat his record. One minute, one minute.
Thank you, enjoy it.
All right, up next, we have application 48-18, Proya, 317 Edwards Drive West and East Falmouth.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of the, of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Stephen Proya and Kelly Shaw Proya of Allen, Texas, apply to the zoning board of appeals for a modification of existing variance and special permits 19-98 pursuant to Section 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth, to enclose a portion of the existing deck and construct additions, including dormers and a front porch of the pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling on subject property known as 317 Edgewater Drive West, East Falmouth. Standing comments from engineering? No comment, no comment, no comment, no comment, no comment. One letter of, one letter of objection.
Okay, and for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Kevin Claw, I'm an attorney with Amen Clawer Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Stephen and Kelly Proya, the owners of 317 Edgewater Drive West located in East Falmouth. 317 Edgewater Drive West is located in Seaco Shores, towards the southern end of the peninsula. The lot has 25,900 square feet, and it's located in a residential C zoning district. The Proyas purchased this property last year, are in the process of permitting renovations to make the home more comfortable and appropriate for their family. However, due to the lot limitations, its shape and size, and the necessary setbacks related to that, they are trying to do so essentially within the existing footprint. The property presents as a one-story building with a garden shed located in the front yard. There is a walkout finished lower floor at the rear of the building, which doesn't appear that way from the front. The total lot coverage by structure is just over 2,000 square feet at 8.25%, and it's got a height of approximately 17 feet. The property is non-conforming in a number of manners, the dwelling and the shed are both non-conforming. The shed is actually the subject of a 1998 variance, which allowed its location within the front yard closer than 50 feet to the street. It's located approximately six feet from Edgewater Drive, that decision was submitted to this board. The dwelling is non-conforming as to front yard setback, being 18.3 feet where 25 is required, and the setback to the three-foot contour being 19 feet where 50 feet is required. The applicant is seeking to expand the living space on the main floor by enclosing a portion of the existing porch, they're adding a small entry porch on the easterly side, other changes would involve a slight alteration of the roof line to raise it in order to create attic storage and vaulted ceilings in the new area, and they'll be using decorative dormers on the front. The bedroom count remains the same at three, the average height from grade will be approximately 23.5 feet, and the resulting lot coverage by structure will increase to only 8.4%, well below the 20% allowed by right. This adds only 39 square feet to the footprint of the home. This does, however, require a special permit under Section 240-3C due to the existing non-conformities. That section states that the board may allow for changes to pre-existing non-conforming structures, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240-216, and whether or not the alteration creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs a view of vista, or in reasonably conformity to the neighborhood. What the applicant has proposed does not impact any of those existing non-conformities, does not create any new existing, uh, new non-conformities, the addition is not within any of the non-conforming setbacks. The lot coverage, as I mentioned, will increase but only slightly, and again, well under what is permitted, and the bedroom count will remain the same. The new structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists, it will not cause any adverse effects into the bylaw, there are no new non-conformities, and none of the existing are increased. For these reasons and given these considerations, I would ask that you grant this special permit, and I'd be glad to address any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clawer, we'll turn it to board questions, Bob, do you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
No question.
Ken, any questions?
No.
My eyebrow just went off my face.
Okay, seeing no questions by the board, is there anyone in the public who wishes to make any comment, questions, any concerns, from all three of you, seeing none, coming back to the board? What would be the board's pleasure?
I'd be happy to move that we close.
Second.
Ken moves to close, second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How would the board like to proceed? Seeing that there weren't any questions.
I'd like that we motion through, yeah, motion approve as submitted.
All right.
Second.
Okay, I heard that from both Ken and Paul, I'll give that to Ken, and second by Ed. All right, moving on to findings.
So this certainly, is a minimal increase in lot coverage improves the usability, I guess, of the structure, and conforms to the general conditions of 240 216.
Improve the neighborhood.
Does not contain a playground.
No space for it, either.
The, there's modest increase in, in height of the structure, but still remains, I guess, below a two-story structure, right? And so bulk is minimally affected.
Additional bulk is minimal?
Yeah. They have a nice raised bed garden. You don't have to include.
Lovely landscape?
Yes.
Okay.
And so I guess in terms of conditions, would just be as per plan.
Okay, anything else?
And the find, there's also a finding, no increase in bedrooms?
Three beds remaining at three beds.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Okay, so that motion was made by Ken and seconded by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Kevin, did you say to your client, you know, this is gonna be tough?
I was there for hours for this hearing.
You may not get this.
All right, and since I was a late arrival, I understand that some open meeting items were discussed, but I think, was it number two, Suri, that was on board?
Yes, I, I need the board's help in trying to possibly, I don't know how you would do it, possibly write a letter, I'm running into issues where, especially, it came to light recently, where, where, he's getting, they're getting better at letting me sign off on the building permit so I can compare what the board approved, however, they're issuing occupancy before, there are some conditions where we condition different things like as-built, prior to final inspection or occupancy. That is not being here to, case in point, one that you dealt with last week regarding driveways.
Right.
CO is issued, so I have to turn to the zoning enforcement agent, or bring him back to this board again, I don't know, he hasn't contacted me since the, since that meeting, but that isn't the only issue, there's, I mean, the only instance, we've had, there were instances where there was definite changes, and we didn't sign off, so I went down to Rod, they're making sure that they're sending people up to us now to compare and sign off before, but again, you guys make conditions where, like an as-built, which can't be submitted until all the appurtenances, because quite often it's decks and front steps that you're worried about encroaching into their setbacks. I'm not seeing all the finals, they're not coming to us, so I'm just kind of at my wits' end, and I'd like to get something in process or.
Is it something that they're not checking, I mean, like, it goes, like.
I don't know, I, I know they're busy, but every department's busy, but this board conditions certain things, and if they're not adhered to, I have to go through, or Ashley and I, we, you know, every once in a while, we try to get to the files and see what's been approved for a building permit, how close they are to being finished and documented, or let the people know that, hey, your special permit's running out, what are you gonna do? It's tough for us to catch everything.
Right.
But if this process, the process used to work just fine, and now all of a sudden, and I realize they're busy, they, they, you know, they let me know all the time, but so are we, and I don't know how to control, I can't put everything on the calendar, I can't, I don't know when something's gonna be finished being built, and I don't have the time to look on that municity every day, plus inspections don't always get put on there, because I did ask Ashley to contact them and find out, because we had a couple issues, complaints, so I wanted to see if the building permit was actually issued in their process, and sometimes they don't get things on municity for a couple days because they're busy.
All right.
They just hired somebody, so hopefully that person will be able to help, and maybe we can get back on board, but.
But you should be, you shouldn't have to double-check, I mean, they should be.
Well, quite often, we don't, because we don't have time either.
But you shouldn't have to, they should be sending you.
But.
That's why we have a zoning enforcement officer, right?
Right, but I mean, if it's not caught, and we don't sign off, then that's a lengthy process, and the. process and the deed's already done, so to speak.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
It's unfortunate for members of the public, because they've gone through the trouble of the special permit process and dealing with the building commission.
Well, you can look at it both ways. They got... It's got free kind of on some things, unless I have the time and to turn it over, and I don't, you know... I don't know, I'm just kind of... Maybe a letter from the board could be written, and I don't know.
Yeah, I think we should.
I think that's appropriate.
I mean, I've talked with them a couple times, so, but it's really starting to affect us greatly on rushing to try to see, okay, let's check this one out, because it had conditions prior to final. I mean...
Yeah.
It's just becoming very frustrating, and I'm not sure how to resolve this issue.
So why don't we...
Either that or you guys conditioned everything prior to the issuance of a building permit. You can do that, but you can't do as-belts like that.
Right. So, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking is we should authorize Suri to draft the letter and have you sign the letter, TJ.
I think that's fine.
Because you...
Stating what?
You mean prior...
Because you know the details of the circumstance and what you want to say.
You mean prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit?
Or final inspection. I found out that quite often they don't issue occupancy permits, because people don't want to pay that extra 25, 50 bucks to get one, whatever it is. This was a while ago that I found that out, which is why we've changed your conditions to prior to final sign-off by building or zoning administrator, like if they come to us first.
Yeah.
Then if I have the materials, I can sign off so they can get their final. You know...
I mean, it's so tough to manage. I mean, I, you know, I mean, I got to tell you, I mean, if a permit... If something went to the Board of Appeals, the appeal period ran, and the applicant applies for a permit, I issued the permit predicated on, you know, the Board of Appeals' approval, it goes... Construction is underway, they're done, they call for a final inspection and the administrative occupancy. I can totally see how, you know, in a town where Rod doesn't have, I don't know how big the staff is at the moment, I just don't know, but I can tell you, I don't take the plans out to look to see if it's been done in accordance with the board's approval. I just don't.
Well, this happened quite a few years ago, and I talked to a building inspector about it, and he says, we're only... We only inspect building code.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, our bylaws state that the building commissioner oversees this section, this chapter of the bylaws, so...
I mean, in any event, you always have enforcement action, no matter what, right?
Yeah, but it's hard.
Oh, it's hard, yeah.
You have to go to zoning enforcement, then zoning enforcement's backed up, and...
Isn't there also a problem with the building versus outside things like driveways and parking lots? Is that a...
Yeah.
Is that a problem?
What do you mean? I'm sorry.
Well, they didn't do the driveway for the drawings.
Right.
I thought the comments were made by the building inspector.
Well, he came in to get a sign-off, and in between him coming in and me doing the administrative approval and bringing him here, he got COs. So in that particular case, he knew.
Yeah.
He knew. So you can't blame the building department for that, because I guess they don't inspect the driveways, but it was a condition per plans, and it was for the safety of the occupants of that dwelling.
I mean, I've never thought of that. Can you withhold the issuance of an occupancy permit if it's not...
Based on a special permit.
Right. Like legally, can you withhold the issuance of an occupancy permit if it's not done in accordance with a Board of Appeals approval? I don't know. I've never had that... It's a good question, I don't know.
Otherwise, why would you have the Board of Appeals?
Why do we take our time and do it?
No, I know, I'm just saying, I'm not sure the board... I mean, I just don't know, it's a good question.
It's recorded.
Yeah, but I mean, it's... There's situations where a guy might not be totally done with his project as the board approved it. He might come to the building commissioner and say, hey, listen, I got to get in here. Is there any way I could get an occupancy permit? And I think...
I'm hearing that people are getting in there without an occupancy permit.
Well, under the building code, he... To start a project, the building commissioner has the right to issue at homeowner's risk, correct?
Yeah, right.
I don't know if that goes without saying for the CO, but that's neither here nor there. There's a process in place.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll try talking to Rod again, and I...
Well, I think we should submit a letter.
I think a letter would be appropriate. Ken, I think you were on the verge of a...
I just, you know, either that or maybe, I don't know.
You want that as a motion?
Do we need that as a motion, Suri?
I really don't have anybody I can go to, you know, because I'm sure the reasoning for them being busy is good enough, but the problem is, these are special permits, and these conditions are made for certain reasons, so...
Who should the letter go to? Julia or the...
No, no, it should go to Rod with respect. He is the building commissioner. And maybe to ask for a process that will work, so these issues don't happen.
I mean, you must be referring to things outside of construction, like if someone gets a special permit for...
Not always.
For a dormer, generally, they construct it in accordance with the approved plans, and when they request a final inspection, the dormer's done. But also, maybe the board required a fence to be installed between the property, the abutting properties, and, you know, maybe that wasn't done. I mean, I don't... Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And that's the case, that's... I don't have time to go out and inspect.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I used to be able to, but I just don't have the time.
Yeah.
And I never know when the projects are going to be finished. There were a couple instances years ago where I went and inspected and come to find out, they built a deck in the back...
Yeah.
That encroached the setback. I contacted the contractor and then went and told Mr. Gore that was rectified, but there are instances like that. Now, I just, you know, I just like a process to protect the conditions of the board, and they're made, you know, with due diligence and respect to safety and other issues, and the zoning bylaw.
Yeah. I mean, the only way that we can...
Where would we be without the zoning bylaw?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you draft a letter, and what the problems are, you ask them to give you some kind of, you know, what is their procedure they're currently dealing with? What are they doing? And if that doesn't work, how do they suggest it be changed?
Yeah, I mean, I guess you just mean suggestions.
Maybe he can come up with an idea that would work better for them down there, that's a little more speedy and will help everyone on all sides.
Okay.
But if you have a special permit, you've got conditions and they're not being met, I mean...
Yeah, that was... This last one was a safety thing. That was the reason we did that.
You know, if you have more than one zoning enforcement officer, it'd be different, but you don't, you have one, so...
But the problem wouldn't exist if the process was followed.
Yeah, if the process is a bean, so there's got to be something that's...
You know, to where I can say, well, you know, the board conditioned it per plan, and you've changed this, you either come back to the board and ask, which he did, and you guys denied it...
With good reason, yeah.
So, you know, we'd have something to hold on to. But it's sad that, you know, there's so many things that may have to be turned over to the zoning enforcement agent, where if we just followed the process, it would eliminate all that. So I'll write a letter and ask Rod if he can come up with a better process or some way that, you know, things aren't gotten away with, and quite frankly, it's not always the applicant's fault, because they don't know the process.
Right.
You know, they... In most cases, they have attorneys or engineers representing them. They don't follow through, because they're not made as a general contractor, if you will.
Yeah, the contractor might not even know that the fence was supposed to be clear.
So, the contractor, well, that's just it, when they come in to get the building permit, they have a copy of that special permit. And when I do an administrative approval, I do one for the contractor and the homeowner, and one for the building, and it all goes on municity. So, and one for the board. So anyway, I'll see what I can do with asking Rod about a process if he has a better way.
So we have to do a motion to...
A motion?
No, it's just a consensus.
Okay. And I think you have the consensus of the board?
Just to let you know, I'm frustrated and trying to find a way.
All right. Were all the other open meeting items taken care of?
There was one that I brought up, which we volunteered you for.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, can't wait to hear what it is.
Which is, we wanted to send a letter to the town manager about Suri's role in... Critical role in the functioning of the zoning Board of Appeals to basically encourage them to hire a great person to replace her, because it's not going to be so easy.
Or take an active role in doing it now, so that there's no...
Yeah, right.
I'm worried about decisions not being made, because hearings are going to go on.
Right.
And you need somebody to draft those decisions.
So we can't have like a gap. We don't want a gap.
Exactly.
You know, in fact, if we could have overlap, it would be good, because someone could be learning a little bit about how things operate from...
Yeah, no, it's very important.
And we just saw the whole process with the new planning chair being hired, so...
So my thinking was, you know, that we could lay out all of the functions interacting with the public drafting the decisions, being, you know, being deeply familiar with the zoning bylaw and what applies to, you know, to each of these cases, and ensuring that we have, that our decisions are adequately backed up by the, you know, provisions within the bylaw.
Okay.
With Mass. General Law.
Yeah.
The crucial thing is the decisions and the timeliness, so there are no constructive grants.
Right, and we want to avoid constructive grants.
That's the issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's one of the issues. Your guidance to the board is important, your...
Well, I didn't know your zoning bylaws until I got here.
Guidance to the public is important.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you had enough of a legal framework that when you... That you could rapidly grasp on.
Yeah, it's going to be difficult.
They should have started yesterday looking for something.
Correct. Day before yesterday.
No question.
Well, I don't know their issues with timelines and having somebody on board and the whole bit. I don't know that, and that's hopefully something we'll be able to find out.
We know the history of the town, right?
Well, I think there's reasons why they can't maybe hire somebody.
Yes.
But it doesn't stop them from looking.
Well, they can post the job. I don't know if they've even posted the job.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying.